Go ahead, Paul, let's begin to order, please. Appreciate folks being with us today. The first item on the agenda is listen and learn. Our Assistant Prosecuting Attorney, even during now. And sir, you are on.
Excellent. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here to talk to you briefly. Hopefully, I know you have a very busy agenda, as usual, about community solar. And so I will note the quotation marks are intentional. So what is community solar? The General Assembly, back in their last Assembly session, proposed in the House Bill 450, the language for what would ultimately not become law in Ohio. They suggested that the definition of community solar would be, in summary, a facility of less than 10 megawatts in Ohio that had subscribers to it within certain facilities that could be owned by an affiliate of an electric distribution utility, which are your ADPs, first energy companies. But it couldn't actually be owned by the EDU based on the changes in the electricity market in Ohio, the deregulation in the early 2000s. But, you know, given the way that this later speaks, it's often important to break it down. And it boils down to a small-scale, subscription-based solar project that allows individuals who live in other areas to buy or lease parts of a larger array so that they can make benefits on their electric bills from these solar facilities without actually having to put the panels up on their apartment in downtown Cleveland or worry about the location and the issues that they may face in that area. Other jurisdictions besides Ohio allow for a wattage of less than 50 megawatts. But Ohio decided that they wanted to put for 10. But ultimately, that didn't pass House Bill 450, die in committee, and has not been reintroduced in this General Assembly session. However, I will note that some individuals say "community solar" when they actually mean "small-scale solar." Small-scale solar is regulated in Ohio, and that's simply a solar project that's less than 50 megawatts. So a small-scale solar facility is anything as long as it's less than 50 megawatts. And so, given the way that Ohio regulates it, that means it can be anything of about 250 to 500 acres or less, all the way down to a solar panel on someone's house. And again, Ohio law very cleverly decided that regulation would depend entirely on the output of the solar facility. It wouldn't depend on the size or what sort of use you were making, what sort of panels, things like that. It's important to note that all of this regulation that has just come out in the General Assembly is in relation of the Regulation Report in Senate Bill 52, which now Madam State Orsec spoke to you gentlemen about last year. And that was for facilities larger than 50 megawatts and went into effect in 2021, making changes to the Ohio Power Siting Board and the Public Utilities Commission and how the Commissioners can interact with that process to control larger solar facilities. But House Bill 501, late in the term last year, it was an end-of-term bill, as you can see from the date, January 5th being effective on April 6th, applies to anything less than 50 megawatts, copying similar terminology and using the previous thresholds put forward in Senate Bill 51. So House Bill 501 made three changes to the revised code, specifically adding a definition of small-scale small-solar facility to the regulations, zoning regulations for counties, townships, and municipalities. In short, it basically said that it's any sort of electric operation with a single interconnection to the electric grid as long as it's less than 50 megawatts. However, for Fairfield County, the only relevant portion of those three changes is the portion relating to townships, as there's no solar or no zoning regulations on the county level. Importantly, 501 amended 519.231 within the township code and similarly within municipalities and counties to give townships extensive control over solar projects and wind projects. But it said they can regulate it with respect to the location, erection, construction, reconstruction, change, alteration, maintenance, removal, use, or enlargement of any small solar facility, whether publicly or privately owned or the use of a land for that purpose within the township or the county or municipality. But you can imagine that's a huge change that really opens the door to all sorts of regulation by the townships. However, if the township wishes to go forward through the process in order to regulate solar, they would have to amend their zoning regulations via 519.12, which is again why there's no county-level solution to or county-level resolution action that can be taken in regards to solar, small-scale solar facility. Graph language hasn't been available with the townships, so they'd be interested in proposing it?
How has that been made available?
By the Ohio Township Association. They came out with it in consultation with Brochus Law Firm and made it available to their members for them to review and take in whatever direction they wish, in consultation with their local council.
Thank you.
And just briefly to review revised code 519.12, since you would have no reason to be familiar with how townships and zoning regulations. It can start one of three ways. The trustees pass a resolution to amend their zoning. The Township Zoning Commission makes a motion to amend its own zoning. Or a citizen initiative is sent to the trustees. But that ultimately will end up before the Township Zoning Commission, any way it starts. As it's submitted to the Township Zoning Commission, they have a public hearing and forward a copy onto the Regional Planning Commission for the RPC review. The RPC then turns around and provides the recommendations, approval, modifications, or denial of the amendments and modifications to the zoning code, sends that on to the trustees after it's done.
Okay, so when you say anything less than 50, does that mean if someone lives in Walnut Township and wants to put solar on their roof for their own use? It's part of this?
It is.
Okay.
It's very, very extensive.
Okay, thank you.
Bounces back and forth until ultimately the trustees, after they receive a more finalized form of the amendments to their zoning regulations, hold a public hearing, and they either adopt or deny the recommendations. If it is adopted by the township trustees, then the citizens have 30 days to have a referendum filed based off of the usual referendum requirements within the state of Ohio, 8% in the last general election in that territory. So again, summarize everything. This does not change the existing regulatory schemes put forward by Senate Bill 52, which is anything over 50 megawatts. The statute allows for local control over small-scale solar and wind facilities, but those don't seem to be too pressing at the moment. And it places small-scale solar facilities under governmental subdivisions zoning codes for them to do what they see fit. That's it.
Well done.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioners?
I don't have any questions. Thank you for your presentation. Mr. Levesey, any questions or comments?
Oh, thank you. Very well done.
Thank you.
Mr. Fix, anything additional?
Yeah, so you guys work with a lot of townships. Do you know other townships currently trying to figure this out?
Some townships have expressed an interest. Amanda, out far west where they've been having difficulty with their solar facilities, expressed some interest in our resolution. But they will obviously be hampered by the size restrictions put forward in these new codes. Liberty has expressed some interest, but not much. Walnut has already put forward their resolution to the Regional Planning Commission. That's working its way through the process. That was done without any input from the prosecutor's office. But we have not heard much from the other townships as of yet. It is important to note that two of the townships within the county do not have any zoning regulations currently. So they wouldn't be able to do any sort of amendments to their zoning code or regulate solar in any fashion, since they don't have the original zoning code.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This time, the Commission sets aside an opportunity for voters or taxpayers to address the Commission. If you would like to do so, please to the podium and begin by stating your name and residential address. Do you have a three-minute time limit, which we would appreciate your courtesy on? We would ask that your comments be directed to the Commission as to other members of the audience. Is there anyone who would like to address the Commission at this time and under those?
Good morning. My name's Ray Stephen. Same address as I've been for years. I would like to comment on a few things that over a week ago, we were able to, Judy and I both, to converse with Robert Sprague, the Ohio Treasurer, and we discussed some things about abortion issues from the standpoint that a lot of things that are being taught in schools are not in favor of abortion, which is the way it should be. God made each individual. And what has happened? Too many cases in which the mothers wanted to have abortion, and they were decided against it. And they're very happy that they did try to go against it. But there's going to be a lot of money spent in Ohio to change what the Supreme Court of the nation did. They put it back on the states. And there's a lot of money coming into Ohio to change what we have as our constitution here in Ohio. And Robert Sprague was saying that we're going to try to defeat it and try to correct misinformation. And this is what it's all about. Information. That's true of almost any subject that comes up that needs a law or something like that. And really, what it is, the fact, is this nation was built on Christian principles and morality. And as long as we keep God before us and try to do morally what he has described in the Ten Commandments and through the scriptures of the Bible, we would be okay in all of our work. But we seem to have put God aside now, and we don't. Well, I can remember when Judy and I were younger, that every meeting that was in the counties and so forth, we went to in the schools, there was prayer. But back in the 60s, we took God out of the schools, and prayer followed. So I would like to follow with prayer this morning for you, Jim, and the rest of us. Lord, guide and direct us in what we say and what we do, and help us to reach out to those that do not know you and explain our feelings and our guidance and what it's about. Because we know we were created by our Lord Jesus and says so in John in the New Testament. But the Word was with God from the very beginning. And the Word refers to Jesus, and he was with the Lord from the very beginning. And so we need to keep that in mind. And when problems come up, we need to refer to God for the answers, because he has the answers for us. Thank you. Amen.
Anyone else who'd like to address the Commission?
Sherri Pymer, Walnut Township, 3464 South Bank Road. I know you know I'm here because of solar. We're trying to put a packet of information together for the Commissioners. However, one of the things that we're going to put in the packet is, and I thought this was a little more time-sensitive, so I'm going to give you each a copy of this. This was put out, it has to do with Senate Bill 52. And, but it was put out by the attorney firm that is actually handling the Fox squirrel project over in Madison County. And on the last page, it has the local approval process. And so they've got the chart, and I don't know if you've got this already or not, but it kind of simplifies it a little bit. And I know, Commissioner Fix, you were wanting to wait until the application to the Ohio Power Siting Board was submitted before really kind of digging into, you know, some of this thing. But it's almost too late once it gets that far. And so unfortunately, I'm not going to read this to you, but I'm going to give each of you a copy of this. Because the whole process is not very transparent, especially in the beginning. The project of the Eastern Cotton Tail in Walnut Township, that process has been going on for about five years. Public didn't know that. Because it's under ADP, it's not under Eastern Cotton Tail. It won't be under Eastern Cotton Tail until it actually gets applied for at the OPSB. That's when the general public can get on OPSB and see, oh, Eastern Cotton Tail, Fairfield County. Because right now, there's nothing there. It's in the PJM process, but that's under ADP. It's not under Eastern Cotton Tail. So it's very misleading, and it's very difficult for the general public to find out. The other thing is that CBS had, which one of the big three, believe it or not, put out a story, and it's on YouTube. The replay is on YouTube. And they visited recycling places in Arizona. One was for wind, one was for solar. And then they also visited an actual solar site. They were replacing panels that were only three or four years old. Not because they weren't working, because they said, well, because the new technology, you know, the panels are better now. So we're, and the newscaster said, well, so these are only three or four years old, and you're replacing them? And they said, yeah, because of technology. Well, in two or three more years, the technology is going to be even better to where you don't have to take thousands and thousands and thousands of farmland to have solar, if you want solar. Ohio is not a very good state for large solar projects. If you want to put them on your house, fine. And I was interested to hear the little presentation earlier. But I believe that the in-between solar projects are from 5 megawatts to 49.9. And below 5 megawatts is those are the ones that, you know, put on the houses, their barns, their buildings, or whatever, for personal use, basically, or business use. Which, as far as what I understand that was told to us, is that people can do that, that this doesn't regulate them out of being able to put these things on their houses. Thank you.
Hey, guys, doing today?
All right.
Well, I'm Adam Murk and Love Weight Team. I'm a business representative for IOE Love Weight Team, Operating Engineers. The address is 1188 Evelyn Road, Columbus, Ohio, 43215. On behalf of the Operating Engineers Love Weight Team, if I get this phone to work right, I'm here to support the approval of the Eastern Cotton Tail solar project. The operating engineers are the individuals who operate heavy equipment, equipment such as bulldozers, excavators, vacuums, forklifts, and so on. The roads and bridges you drove along were most likely built by members of Love Weight Team along with fellow union tradesmen, women. These solar projects will help provide our members with numerous employment opportunities and turn high-paying wages, health care benefits, apprenticeship programs, continue to grow because of the solar industry. If approved, the Eastern Cotton Tail project will not only create jobs, but you can expect an economic impact, additional tax money, and clean energy for Ohio as a result from the project. We encourage the Fairfield County Board Commissioners to support the jobs of the men and women of Love Weight Team by approving the Eastern Cotton Tail project. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Anyone else who'd like to address the Commission at this time?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Paris Walker. I live at 5543 Town Hill Drive, Canal Winchester, Ohio. I want to thank you for allowing me to come before you today and to share some of the efforts underway in the county as it relates to the economic development. I know that you heard from a few people in the building trades as it relates to utility-scale solar, including from a colleague of mine. So I will be brief. As a representative of the laborers' union, I want to personally express the importance of having good-paying jobs in our region and working with the company who has made a commitment to us. We are thrilled that EDF has chosen Labor's District Council of Ohio as a partner on the Eastern Cotton Tail solar project. And we will guarantee that our skilled men and women will be a best-in-class project that Fairfield County will be proud of. Ohio has retired or announced for retirement more coal-fired power plants than any other state in the union. Additionally, Ohio imports 20% to 25% of our energy from out-of-state resources. Energy transition is not a theoretical concept in Ohio. It is happening in real time, and solutions are needed. Ohio should embrace the opportunity to create homegrown energy. We'll provide good-paying jobs with benefits and passions. We are excited about the opportunity to build Eastern Cotton Tail and be a part of building our energy future and creating a significant economic development project in Fairfield County. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else who'd like to address the Commission?
Good morning. Just a little confusion when you don't have a printer working for you. And that's been for two weeks now. And just wanted to cover some things. The worst atrocity in the history of the world has been confirmed. The media covers the tracking of unvaccinated people. Yes, unvaccinated people are being tracked by our government now. Also, are you surprised? The Fashi and Gates and DOD and the CDC are funded. They funded this lab over in Sudan. And additionally, a research paper from July 22 shows the lab was funded by the CDC and thanks to DOD's U.S. agency. While researchers investigate thousands of reports from post-COVID jab, the CDC says there's no evidence. Also, the bombshell. Pfizer and the FDA aggressively pushed COVID vaccine on pregnant women despite knowing that mRNA shot caused dire fetal and infant risks. They knew this as early as 2021 that its COVID injection was not safe for pregnant women. And Big Pharma under investigation for the COVID vaccine fraud. This next headline. The Texas attorney down there, Paxton, he's begun looking into the claims. And yeah, it would be great if this was being looked into by our own governor, too. Or Attorney General. Watch, well, we don't need to cover that one. Then, James Dobson warns Biden has planned to destroy America's sovereignty. "God help us," he said, "if we let this happen on our watch." And he also said, "Mark my word. If America gives up its sovereign rule as a nation, we could well lose our sweet land of liberty and effectively forsake every generation that has fought and died for it. God help us if we let this happen on our watch." Biden's plan would give the UN agency the power to shut us down and tell us if we have to have a shot in our arm or tell us if we have to wear masks. It's a platform for, as he said, global governance. And Dobson also noted that the Bible, "In the last days, there will be a one-world government, a dominion that will keep people from buying or selling without approval, a layman to a dictator." Next, the big catch-up. Chelsea Clayton, she's pushing for the largest childhood immunization effort ever. She's coming for your kids, folks. Kids as young as kindergarten. Now, this is the largest childhood immunization effort ever. Government obviously doesn't think they have done enough damage to children and adults. And yet, mm. And if government is truly so concerned about health of Americans, then why do they not require immunization of all persons illegally crossing the border and entering into our communities? Okay? I will get these put together and then present them to Arnie and and Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you. By the way, my name's Judy.
So I'd like to address the Commission.
Stephanie Taylor, Habitat for Humanity, South East Surviving. Wanted to send a very big thank you up to the county workers that came out on Saturday. Can only imagine it was a lot of work. You guys got all the tresses done, from what I understand, which is amazing. Anybody's ever had to do that, they actually have to hand lift them up. So it was a big feat. And thank goodness the weather held out for you. So we're excited about that. If you know of anybody that's interested in coming out on Saturday, we're going to do a women's build. Super pumped for that. And if you're out Thursday at the Chamber Awards, we were selected as the nonprofit of the year. So we're really excited and honored to be a part of that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Then anyone else who'd like to address the Commission at this time? We thank you all for coming up. Stephanie mentioned there that some county folks were out on the site this past Saturday. I had initially said I would be there, and then I wasn't. I had gotten my schedules a little messed up, but Saturday was my youngest son's graduation from high university, so I was unable to make it. But I hope that isn't in any way construed as a lack of support.
You're taking it out?
Damn it.
There's the morning team there. We had utilities folks, economic development workforce. We've had Brian from Common Please and county administration folks there. And then a family, I think, I can't remember where their house is. In Lancaster.
Yeah, so it'll be. Arnie.
Okay.
This is the Cores Center building.
Yeah, so they come and do some hours towards their house. So they were there, mom and three kids. It was awesome. Weather was perfect. Tony and Josh from utilities get the gold star. They got there early and stayed late and were up on the roof pretty much the whole time. So.
Tony likes to be up there.
And then Cory and his folks from JFS. After we got all the trusses loaded up there and then the house wrapped, they came and stood up the trusses, which is what we all did last year. So thanks for doing that part for us. I think Robert there at the site was thrilled that we had moved him ahead in his schedule.
Thank you very much.
He's an awesome worker there, Stephanie. He's a real treat to work with.
Well, the Commissioners very much appreciate all the folks who were able to go out and be helpful in this. be helpful uh in this uh effort. And we also extend our congratulations to Stephanie and Habitat for your the recognition that you received. Will never be enough. Uh, no number of awards or thank yous or congratulations will be sufficient to convey uh what we think your organization led by you and our community anyway uh is accomplishing uh for for folks that are um, you know, really trying to to make their way up the ladder, so to speak. Uh, and you're, you're trying to just give them a little, little push, you know? Uh, and we think it's really cool. We appreciate you. Oh, no. Hey, how y'all doing? Anything on legal?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, Stephen, you did a nice job today.
Thank you.
Move on to uh administration update. Arnie.
All right, we've been review American Rescue Plan update from the thirty point six received. Uh, twenty-three point seven has been appropriated, thirteen point three expended and four point two encumbered or obligated. Um, and Bart and Jeff have done a great job with reporting and tracking. And we've had some folks have additional inquiries as of late if there is funding available. And uh we're pausing for a minute because we have a number of major projects that are outstanding and want to make sure that we can properly fund those projects to completion. And if anyone is sharing a request with us, Jeff and Bart are taking those in and making sure we've got that information to follow up if and when there is an opportunity to add additional projects to that list.
And on that, if I might, on the schedule already is a coming update from Adam. Is that right?
Correct.
And when, when are we supposed to get that update?
Next week, I believe. Let me double check here. Yes, next Tuesday.
Yeah, and so given the order of magnitude of that project, you know, that's kind of the big dog in the room, if you will, in terms of kind of figuring out where the water's going to find its level in terms of the final analysis. So I know that my colleagues and I are all looking forward to to hearing how they're doing and what that timeline looks like. So please. Carol?
Uh, Google update at the Ohio Chamber. So last week, Rick and I had the opportunity to attend the Ohio Chamber Commerce Event where Google officially announced that they are building a total of three fully operational data centers in central Ohio, with one of those being located in Lancaster. Uh, we were also joined by the mayor, Linda Burkey Disser, and um gosh, Stephanie Bosco. Um, there at the event, they had a fun little Google photo opportunity there. So it was a great morning. Um, and A B C did a um an interview with Rick that shed a little bit more light on it. We could roll that back a bit?
We're not weak, six o'clock.
I could ask a couple of questions, because I'm, you know, I know that some folks were under an N D A, a non-disclosure agreement with regard to some of the early conversations with Google. Um, it's, I don't know, a little bit odd to have an announcement that they're going to build when they've been out there building for a year or so. And the other thing is, uh, and I, I don't want to attribute this to anyone other than the street, but the street version of the N D A involved more than one Google data center uh in in Lancaster or Fairfield County. So I, I just not sure that what we're hearing is all there is to be heard. Or if you know more about that, that you're even allowed to say, I don't know. And if you know, and Tony, you may know, I don't know. The, the new well field that is being constructed at Miller Park. Uh, again, for whatever reason, I'm not sure, but some of us were under the impression that the necessity for that new well field was in part driven by uh the, the Google plans. Is that that information accurate or is, or are people just adding one and one together and getting eleven on that? And Rick, I think you were going to share some information before I jumped in and started asking questions. So I'm sorry to
First, I have a question about weather. Uh, part of the reason my dad's I don't have hurricanes, but I have winds. How many wizards you created those? Um, plus access to level. Those, but that's a good reason why we're starting. And then.
Five minutes. Commissioner Lavesey.
So uh, last week, uh, I had uh one of my governors workforce meetings. And this was part of this topic from Governor Houston, Google, he actually mentioned the Lancaster new facility. And he also talked about A I extensively, how it's going to affect the workforce. And I think it's imperative of all of us to not uh think about that and actually be concerned about that. I mean, there's obviously some good benefits, but there could be some downside. He used one illustration of coding where there was a huge shortage of coders in the last couple of years. And now that's totally gone away because of A I. So those jobs are going to be totally eliminated per se. So I think as we continue to think about workforce, we also need to embrace technology in a big way, because I think a lot of the jobs are going to shift that direction. And so, yeah, I don't know enough about it. It is way beyond my pay grade. But I do know it, it uh, it, it's something we need to think about, talk about and, and know more about.
Commissioner Fix, questions, comments, concerns?
Need more housing.
Arnie, please continue.
Okay, highlights of resolutions. Review packet contains a list of administrative approvals. There are fourteen resolutions for the voting meeting today. One resolution that I will point out, there's a resolution to reappoint Dr. Margaret Kwame to the District Library Board. And I was speaking with um our library director. Uh, gosh, I'm a loss for names today.
Shane.
Becky Shane. Need a little more coffee, I think. Um, Becky had asked if she would be interested in coming and doing a brief presentation, just an update on the library, as well as inviting the rest of the other board appointees uh that the commission does make. So in addition to Margaret Kwame, you also have Nathan Hale, Matt Weidman, and then Lisa Evangelista, who served on the library board. So she's looking at some dates and will get back with me. Uh, recognition, happy belated birthday to Commissioner Lavesey and to Sheriff Lee.
Sheriff, I'm sorry, you went to recognitions?
Yeah.
I, I was wanting to touch on budget review.
Yeah, yeah, Bart, anything?
Well, I did have a question that I wanted you to give some thought to, if you would.
Yes.
So perhaps as early as next week, we may have a resolution regarding uh funding mechanisms for the airport projects. Um, I think the way that's probably going to look, I think there's some details to work out still, but something along the lines of a three million dollar um bond issued, replacement, something like that. Um, the thought being somewhere around one point seven to two, let's call it um million dollars in cash. And what I wanted maybe you and Stacy to give a little thought to um is kind of giving the commission a heads up. When we looked at our carryover from twenty-two to twenty-three, it was X. I'm shockingly not able to recall the specific number, but low thirties. Um, and then as we try to project, which I understand the difficulty in doing that, but to, to see the impact of the one seven to two, of course, it would have a negative impact on the carryover from twenty-three to twenty-four. But given the way things are going, it feels from thirty thousand feet like we'll hardly even notice, because it looks today like revenue will probably exceed expense by some number greater than one seven to two. But that's just back of the napkin stuff on my part. And you all have more sophisticated tools to analyze that question. And I would just ask that you do that and then maybe kind of give us a, a, a a very early, rough read on where you think the carryover is headed as we go into twenty-four with an eye towards perhaps a negative two on that. Right? Any questions or comments on that, Dr. Brown?
No, I reported last week, we already adjusted for the investment income in that accounts very much for this change.
I appreciate it. And then staying with kind of budget. Um, how are you today?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Well, good. Um, I, I happen to be uh passing through Savings Bank uh yesterday and Galen Welch uh stopped out to say hello uh to me and said, hey, you know, I'd like to touch base with you and follow up. Is it okay if I give you my number and you give me a call? And I said, sure. And I asked him, I said, you know, uh, I assumed that the, that his interest in talking to me had something to do with county. So I just said, well, I'm sure your office is talking to the treasurer's office, you know, because I know we had some investments there. Um, and he said, no, I, you know, other people handle that. But I just, is there anything going on with Savings Bank by way of contacts that I've?
You know, my contact's actually in Circleville.
Okay.
Mark, and so that's who we talked to as far as investments. As you know, we had moved money from there to our Ohio because of difference in rate. And there were, I, I keep them informed of what's going on. So we still have the accounts there with the, uh, Land Bank, still at the Savings Bank.
Okay.
And we have a good relationship with them.
Yeah, and it could be that, and, and I'm speculating a little bit, but you know, when you go from a homegrown bank, like Standing Stone was, getting bought out by Savings Bank. Maybe one of the things he wants to talk about is just trying to make sure that bridge between the bank and the community is still in place, so to speak. Feeling like maybe that got nicked up a little bit uh in the, uh, in the buyout. So anyway, I, I'll give him a call and, and see what's on his mind.
Okay.
Sorry for the interruption. Please continue.
Back to celebrating birthdays, Commissioner Lavesey and Sheriff Lee. And then an early birthday wish to Rick Zabrag. You're going to party it up on Saturday, huh? Well, thanks. Uh, thank Angel Horn and Christina Wetzel for their assistance with some inventory items with I T. Um, thanks also again to the Habitat volunteer teams. Appreciate it. They're committing their Saturday to that project. And then lastly, County Auditor Dr. Brown, thank the auditor's office for being positive and welcoming the multi-factor authentication process that has begun being released throughout the county. So thanks to Dan and his team for um making sure that we're ready to go there. Rochelle, calendar review and invitations received, please.
Today, the commissioners have the T I D meeting at one o'clock at the Records Center. The Planning Next Staff Meeting is May eleventh at the Fairfield County Workforce Center. The Annual Trade Show Dinner and Awards banquet is May eleventh at Fisher Catholic High School. The Workforce Center graduation is May twelfth at eleven thirty A M at the Workforce Center. And an invitation was received to the Lithopolis Annual Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony to celebrate the one-hundredth year anniversary of the Wagnos Memorial. That is on May twenty-seventh, May twenty-second at ten A M. And um, that is all I have for invitations. For correspondence received from the Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission, we have a stop-work order notice issued to Palmary Builders on May second. From the County Auditor's Office, we have a press release dated May fourth titled Auditor's Real Estate Office Announces Online Address Change Option. And also from the County Auditor's Office, we have a memo dated May fourth, subjects current agricultural use value program, Board of Revision Cases Records Request Update and Lodging Collection Snapshot. We have a petition for a type-two annexation of one point four one two plus or minus acres from Bloom Township to Village of Lithopolis. We have the Fairfield County Municipal Court Criminal Traffic Division Fee Report. We have the Fairfield County Sheriff's Office twenty-twenty-two annual report. And the Fairfield County Heritage Association's newsletter, Fairfield County Heritage Quarterly, spring twenty-twenty-three. Now, if you want to look at the screens, that's my favorite picture from the uh, the Sheriff's twenty-twenty-two annual report. Of the little thingy. And we also have the letters and emails from Fairfield County residents regarding solar energy. That's all I have.
Thank you, Rochelle. I don't have anything further.
Thank you, honey. Well, business, Commissioner Lavesey.
So uh, last week I had the opportunity So, uh, last week I had the opportunity to attend, uh, service down on, uh, Fountain Square and with, uh, all law enforcement, uh, O S P and Sheriff's Office and Police Department. And, uh, it, it was, and I've attended these for the last several years, and this was probably one of the best yet. All organized, I mean, good speakers. So, uh, you know, obviously we were there to recognize those officers who have lost their lives uh, here in Fairfield County. While they were on duty in the service of the county. But, uh, more importantly, I think everyone that spoke, including myself, we talked about how we support law enforcement here in Fairfield County in a big way. And, you know, sometimes it's not just about, about a paycheck, but the appreciation that needs to be shown for those who are willing to serve. So I think that message was given, and I think it was a very good event.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Fix under old business.
I have none this morning. Thank you.
Yeah, just, uh, just as we got, um, had the opportunity to, uh, give a speech, I guess it was, to, uh, Soil and Water Conservation District leaders from around the state regarding, uh, budgeting from a county commission perspective. Um, my colleagues will be happy to know that of the hour I was given, I only used fifty-four minutes. So on time and under budget. But it went really well. I felt good about it. And, uh, it was a good opportunity for, uh, us to continue to broadly share, uh, our fiscally conservative message with all who will listen. Under new business, um, anything, Commissioner Latacy?
So, uh, this week we have the graduation at, uh, at the Workforce Center. I've I do look forward to, uh, seeing that because you, you know, it's a totally different perspective when you see some of these kids receive their certificates. I guess Commissioner Davis will be speaking, so I also look forward to hearing what he has to say.
Me too.
Fifty-four minutes worth? I, I've, I've only been given a half hour. Okay. Do you think?
Maybe I'll give the H R class. Talk about what it's like as a female. Pretty eye-opening, uh, but also her issues. Hearing them talk about possibly the adults when they come here.
Do you have any information or, uh, stats on the number of jobs that are already secured that these folks have locked into?
So I'll give you more. Not in jobs, but, uh, some will not. Some are. That's three of the square. Some would be staying on. So I give the final numbers, but just the word.
Okay.
Two five nine. Mr. Latacy. So at our workforce, uh, board meeting, that was one of the big topics. Matter of fact, you had it. Couple of folks speak that were graduates of career centers. Uh, one in construction, the other in technology, uh, technology repair, kind of interesting, but, uh, and, uh, that, much of that meeting had a, a big focus on what we're going to the Workforce Center, on that kind of operation. So I think we're ahead of the game.
Commissioner Fix under new business.
Monday, thank you.
Rick, just a question. There's a, there's a YouTube personality that I, I see once in a while. His name's Francisco. It doesn't matter. But when I first saw Francisco on YouTube, he had thirty-nine chickens. And then I don't know, a few weeks later, he's talking again and he's got thirty-eight chickens. And there was no explanation given for what happened to the, the other chicken. I was first told there would be fifty-five people graduating, and then this morning I hear fifty-four, and I want to know what happened. Okay. Fair enough.
Sometimes the chickens don't come back.
I thought it was right now.
Francisco's a poker player, if anybody wonders why I'm on YouTube.
Yeah.
All right.
Keep us cool.
Dr. Brown.
We talked a little bit about the current agricultural use valuation program in the past. And an interesting statistic that has recently come to light is that sixty-two percent of the total acreage in the county is within that particular program. And it results in an average of twenty-seven hundred dollars of savings annually, uh, for the property owners. And so just wanted to point out that statistic about what it means specifically for people who are in that particular program. When I came in, I saw Randall and I was thinking about the low-income housing. And House Bill forty-five actually had some negative impacts to those that are making affordable housing. And the third, you can't have the combination of uh, historic preservation credits along with low-income tax credits. But it also did one other thing that is new and it'll be new for the valuations in twenty-three for collections in twenty-four. In that the county auditor can now use multiple methods of that valuation that it could not use previously. It can use market approach, income approach, and combine those approaches even with cost approaches, which is different. And so we in the county auditor's office, we don't know about which of these properties are considered low-income, you know, housing credit type properties. So we're reaching out and asking for people who are connected with these properties to let us know so that we can gain information and, um, have good valuations in place prior to a board revision process. So I reached out to Fairfield Homes, knowing just in general that they did have some of these properties. But if you have a list of all these properties, I would like to have that list so that we can reach out to everybody and so that more information, um, can be provided as we think about those valuations.
Thank you.
On the schedule today, there's a, you know, resolution for an unclaimed funds transfer. That's normal process from two thousand seventeen after five years passed and it's unclaimed and then moves to the general fund. So thirty-three thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars is going to the general fund from unclaimed. There is a process to get it out of the general fund if there's a need to do that, but this is just the normal process for moving those funds. I'm, I'm going to be teaching at a prison, um, on Saturday at the Marysville Prison. And, um, if there's anybody who's interested in joining in that volunteer effort, there's a lot of room for that type of advocacy and it's very rewarding. And I've enjoyed it quite a lot and have been using a lot of the information that I've received in the FBI Citizen Academy to teach these classes. So it's a good, and it's a good connection. And it's very rewarding and very encouraging.
Thank you very much. Anything you want to share?
Just quickly, House Bill one thirty-four, which is, it's very early stages and it has impact on land banks. Not so much land banks, but more so the treasurer's office working with land banks. But as, as far as when we sell tax links to the treasurer's office, then they want us to go ahead and notify all leadowners. So gave some testimony, uh, last week on this. And, uh, right now we're not in favor of it as far as treasurers go. That's current state, so we're trying to work through that with Representative Cleveland opposing the bill, uh, with support of the, uh, Ohio, uh, County Treasurers Association. So keeping a close eye on it. It really changed the way that we, we sell tax links.
And I understand what you've said about one thirty-four in the House. If you know, is there a companion piece yet working its way through the Senate?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. Is there anybody, the issue item that anybody'd like to bring the attention of the commissioner this time?
Just, uh, a note on the schedule, I have to leave after our voting patterns. So I won't be able to attend the hearings.
I object. Recognize your objection and move on, duly noted.
Go up for I can't carry all this stuff.
Do you need a candle?
Uh, fine, thank you. Please rise if you're able to join us in the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance.
In the United States of America. To the republic of which it stands, one nation, united. The essence of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Rochelle, do we have any announcements?
Yes, we do. Today is wear orange for supervised visitation. As you will notice, there are several of us around the room in our orange today.
I missed that.
In support, yep.
I don't have any orange.
And Corey's saying his hair, isn't it?
Yes. Oh.
I'm not sure what color I would have worn that I remember, but last night, those says to me, hey, Steve, I laid a couple of things out under your dresser. Would you please? Here's something decent, like what I laid out. That's why I don't have a video on the day, but if I got a purse. So hopefully that's just a one-off thing. We can get back to these next week. Any additional?
Picture to prove it?
No, don't.
Um. Rochelle, any additional announcements?
Yeah.
Move to the approval minutes for May second, twenty twenty.
Send it second.
Discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Latacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Minutes pass three zero. From the Commissioner's Office, Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash five dot nine dot A. A resolution approving the reappointment of Dr. Margaret Kwame to the Fairfield County District Library Board.
The commissioners move items A, B, and C.
Second.
Discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Latacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion's passed three zero. From the Fairfield County Auditor Finance Department. Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash five dot nine dot D. A resolution authorizing a fund-to-fund transfer auditor fund ten eight.
Send it second.
Discussion. Thank you for the discussion.
Mr. Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Latacy?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From the Fairfield County Engineers Office, Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash five dot nine dot E. A resolution to approve a contract with J and J Bridge Company Incorporated for the G R E thirteen F A I C R thirty-one, five point four five seven Coombe-Cath Road over a tributary to Federer Run Bridge Replacement Project.
The Fairfield County Engineer, I move items E, F, G, H, and I.
Second.
Discussion. Upstart date on those, have to get the contracts filed. And, uh, we, we don't issue like orders and we couldn't issue orders, but on behalf of the commissioner, I want to thank you for coming to our meetings. I think that's nice. And occasionally some question comes up or something, but, um, I, I think that's really cool for the commissioner's office to be represented here. And I just wanted to express our appreciation. Further discussion? It's all wrong.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Latacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Motion's passed three zero for Fairfield County Family, Adult, and Children First Council. Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash five dot nine dot J. A resolution of a grant amendment between the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners as administrative agent for the Fairfield County Family, Adult, and Children First Council and the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services.
Fairfield County Family, Adult, and Children First Council, I move items J and K.
Second.
Discussion. Training that staff receive as an incentive and then, uh, additional funding to support our multi-sensical fund.
Thank you.
Further discussion? It's all wrong.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Latacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion's passed three zero for Fairfield County Job and Family Services. Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash five dot nine dot L. A resolution regarding a service agreement between Functional Training Services Incorporated and Job and Family Services Community Services Division.
New Job and Family Services, I move items L and M.
Second.
Discussion.
These may look almost identical, but put there for different programs within state.
Thank you. Further discussion? It's all wrong.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Latacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Motion's passed three zero. Payment of Bills, Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash five dot nine dot N. A resolution authorizing the approval of payment of invoices for departments that need board commissioner's approval.
Send it second.
Discussion. Please call it wrong.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Latacy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. The next regular meeting is scheduled for May sixteenth at nine AM.
All right. So before we have that next motion, I just want to make sure that I and I guess others are clear on today's schedule. At ten thirty, we have the C D B G hearing, right?
Correct.
And who is conducting that? Holly doing that?
Holly, yeah, Holly.
Yeah, with the Hix Partners.
Uh, regional planning director.
Right.
Did you say Hix Partners?
Yes, yes.
All right. So that's at ten thirty, right?
Correct.
And then at eleven, we have Chip, is that right?
Correct.
Randall, are you on point on that?
I am.
Right. And so from a, uh, procedural standpoint, we adjourned and then those meetings stand alone, so to speak, as C D B G and Chip meetings, right? But as a commission, we're out. Or do we stay in? I think we stay in.
I think you should stay in session for those.
I think we stay in.
They, they will leave them, but they are your public hearings.
Right. We, we won't have Commissioner Fix.
Correct.
Right.
Even though this might influence the state adjournment.
This conversation, every time I point out the stuff that you.
So I would just recess, Commissioner Davis, trying to help you out here. Um, and then you can go back.
Then the other issue item, if anybody'd like to bring the attention of the commission before we recess until ten thirty, when we will have the C D B G hearings. The commission is in recess. We thank you all for coming.
Best of all.